All right, we're back. Thank you so much for your patience. We are now on to public comments on action items. So those are things that we will be voting on this evening. I have one green card up here. This is for non-action item. Is there anyone who would like to speak to the board this evening on action items? These are things that we would vote on. Okay, excellent. Thank you, everyone. Colleagues, consent agenda. Unless there are objections this evening, the consent agenda is approved as presented. Okay, very good. All right, colleagues, moving on now to information items. Our first information item this evening is Title IX policy updates. So as you know, Neola has issued a special update regarding the recent changes to the Title IX regulations. The law requires that school districts have new revised policies in place by August 1st, 2024. In June of 2024, the special update was released to include a new policy, Policy 2264, and revisions to an existing policy, Policy 2266. Policy 2264 addresses the new 2024 Title IX regulations. Policy 2266 was originally adopted to address the 2020 Title IX regulations. OCR announced when it was released that 2024 regulations, that any reports, quote-unquote "reports," or quote-unquote "formal complaints" involving allegations of sex-based harassment that involved conduct alleged to have occurred prior to August 1st, 2024, which was the effective date of the 2024 regulations, must be processed in accordance with the 2029 Title IX regulations. So revising our existing policy will address this legal requirement. Policy updates have been prepared and reviewed by Neola's legal council to guarantee statutory compliance. Further, these policies have been reviewed by our administration, including our Title IX coordinators, to ensure consistency with compliance and practice. Further, members of the board received copies in advance for review. That's in our packet this evening. You'll see all the changes in our packet. So to meet the August 1st, 2024 deadline, the Board of Education will be asked to approve the following policies this evening under New Business: Policy 2264, Non-Discrimination on the Basis of Sex in Education Programs or Activities; and Policy 2266, Non-Discrimination on the Basis of Sex in Education Programs or Activities. So again, these are updates to policy to bring us in compliance with new regulation and law. All of those are detailed. All the revisions are detailed in our packet. Do we have any questions this evening for our Title IX coordinator, Nadine Milastan? Yeah, Member Petrusia, please.
Seeing how it's pretty much federal and state rules and laws, we kind of have to do this, right? Because again, it's where we're getting it tonight, and we're voting on it tonight, which I don't like to do, but it's kind of like the law. It is. That takes all the fun out of it. They go, "Oh, we have to do this." Okay, thanks. That's all I had.
Thank you, Member Petrusia. Are there any other comments or questions? Okay, excellent. Thank you, Nadine. Thank you, everyone. Okay, colleagues, moving on now to our second information item this evening, our Leggett Purchase Agreement. We have Assistant Superintendent Elka up here to field any questions. We've talked a little bit about this. Do we have any questions regarding the Leggett Purchase Agreement?
All kinds, but it's until I have a full board, I can't really have all the different questions. So just hold off till then.
Member Wagner, you good?
Anything.
Okay, well, good, Sandy. Thank you. Sandy, we'll keep you up there, though, because we have our next information item is our Honor Health Agreement. So I don't know if you wanted to bring us up to date here.
Yes, thank you very much. I'm going to be joined by Jeff Cook. He is the Chief of Community Services for Honor Community Health, and he's going to help me hopefully answer some questions. I'm sure you'll have, once we go through this.
Mr. Cook, welcome.
So the Honor Community Health is part of the Oakland Integrated Healthcare Network, which has run the Waterford Durant Teen Health Center since 2011. The clinic itself has been operating for approximately 20 years in total, serving the students of Waterford Schools from years three to 21, and up to 26 for our special ed students. Since the first clinic was established, we have added Waterford Mason and Children's Villages locations as well. Our current agreement with Honor Health needs to be renewed, and we have our attorney reviewing the agreement, so you do not have that available quite yet. We are looking for about another four years of agreement. The district provides space for the operations and a liaison with, from the district, but no other monetary support. Honor Health staffs a nurse practitioner, a medical assistant, and a behavioral health clinician for these centers. Honor Health also offers an array of services for our students and their families, from mental health evaluation and therapy to physical exams to immunization. So it is part of the community. They do a good job with community outreach and having community advisory. So we have people on an advisory committee that helps direct what we want with the services and how we want to reach out to the students. We also have a youth advisory committee that's made up Durant students that also gives us insight into what they want from that committee. I have Jeff here. If you have questions about the program, the services, a couple of years ago, I might want to note is, for security reasons, we have made sure that this is only for our students and family. After COVID, because some of the numbers went down for obvious reasons, we did expand it a little to have people in the community come in who might not have been students. But a couple of years ago, for security purposes, we shut that down. They do have a secured entrance, so it's not like anybody can walk in there, but this made us feel a little bit better that only students were coming in, so we have a little bit more control over who's there as well.
Alex, we have some questions. Member Wagner, please.
Hi.
Oh, gosh, that was loud. So right now, we have the three facilities between Children's Village, Mason, and Durant. So do we have a nurse practitioner that floats between the three?
We have one designated nurse practitioner just for Durant.
Okay.
And one nurse practitioner for Children's Village. And then at Mason, it's a little different model. We have a full-time behavioral health clinician, master level, just providing mental health services to those students.
Okay, but it's for any student, so a student from a different building could come over there to Mason for those services?
They could.
Okay. All right, thank you.
The new agreement will be four years, I believe you said. That hasn't come before us yet, but the four-year agreement is the plan?
Correct. It's a pretty simple agreement, but we have three agreements that we put into one, because when we had the other locations, it sort of just added to it. So we're trying to just put them together. But again, the point is, is that they have to have insurance, they have to be staffed. We just offer them space, and so that is really the extent of ours, along with liaison. But we're really helping them just to have that as a service for our students.
So it doesn't cost us, is that out of this budget or that budget?
Correct. Correct. So, you know, we don't do utilities, so that's accepted.
Do they want more room? Can we, if you bring, you know, we give them more room, they'll bring more nurses in?
So we have talked about that, because there are grants from the state, and we've had that conversation. We're doing a few things with Durant with moving a few classrooms around. We may have room, but we haven't gotten into that. But we do have an opportunity, if we want to do that, to extend it. The grants would pay for that work on our building.
I like that. You come all the way in, I have to ask something.
In terms of our timeline, what is our timeline?
So we would like to have it approved either at 8:01 or 8:18. And we would give, as soon as the attorney is done reviewing it, which I'm hoping for one more week, then we'd just go ahead and send it to you early, so you can review it. It's actually a pretty simple agreement. It's, you know, it's not one of those very complicated. It's just making sure that they know they're responsible for everything that happens in there. We're just responsible to give them space for that service.
So do you have a sense of any, are there any substantial changes to the agreement?
No, we really just wanted to put it in one agreement. Like I said, we had different agreements, because Durant started Mason, and that, yeah. So it's just really in one agreement. It just talks about the fact that they run it, they do the services, we provide the room, and they just present to our students, so.
Any other questions here? Mr. Cook, thank you for joining us this evening, and I imagine we'll see you again soon, I imagine.
Thank you. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you, Jeff.
Thanks, Andrew.
Colleagues, we're going to move on now to New Business, and as everyone will see, and for folks following along at home, this is a lot of our annual summer housekeeping, updating or approving most of our memberships and the like. So we're going to turn it over first to Acting Secretary Jocelyn.
Superintendent's Recommendation 1-24-25: Designate Area Newspaper to Publish Official Board Notices. It is recommended that the Board of Education designate the Oakland Press for publication of legal notices for the 2024-2025 school year. I so move.
Support.
Thank you. Motion's been moved and supported. Any comments or questions? All those in favor, please signify by raising your hand. Thank you. The motion carries 4-0. Member Jocelyn?
Superintendent's Recommendation 2-24-25: Appointment of Legal Counsel. It is recommended that the Board of Education hereby recognize and appoint the following law firms as 2024-2025 approved legal counsel for the Waterford School District to be utilized as determined by the Superintendent of Schools or designee: Miller Johnson, Thrun Law Firm, Clark Hill, Richard E. Krupnick, PLC. I so move.
Support.
Thank you. The motion for the appointment of legal counsel has been moved and supported. Comments or questions, please? Very good. All those in favor, please signify by raising your hand. Thank you. Motion carries 4-0. Member Jocelyn?
Superintendent's Recommendation 3-24-25: Resolution: Appointment of Superintendent or Designee to Represent the Board of Education in All Elections. Whereas the School Code of 1976, as amended, provides that the Secretary of a School District, a local act district, or an intermediate school district shall be the chief election officer of the respective district with authority to delegate election duties to a member of the district's administrative staff. Be it resolved that the Board of Education hereby appoint Scott A. Lindberg, Superintendent of Schools, and his designee Sandra Elka, Assistant Superintendent, Business and Operations, to represent the Board in all elections. Be it further resolved that the appointees have taken the official constitutional oath of office to affirm that they will faithfully discharge the election duties of the Secretary of the Waterford School District Board of Education in all school district elections to the best of their ability. I so move.
Support.
Thank you. It's been moved and supported. Do we have any comments or questions here on this resolution? Okay, all those in favor, please signify by raising your hand. Thank you. The motion carries 4-0. Member Jocelyn?
Superintendent's Recommendation 4-24-25: Authorization to Represent Waterford School District in Property Matters. It is recommended that the Board of Education authorize Sandra Elka, Assistant Superintendent, Business and Operations, to represent the Waterford School District Board of Education in all property matters for the 2024-2025 school year, enabling her to sign board-approved purchase, sale, and lease agreements on the Board's behalf. I so move.
Support.
Thank you. It's been moved and supported. Comments or questions regarding the authorization to represent WSD in property matters? All those in favor, please signify by raising your hand. Thank you. The motion carries 4-0. Member Jocelyn?
Superintendent's Recommendation 5-24-25: School District Legal Reference Note. This note is added or attached to the minutes of the July 18th, 2024 regular meeting of the Board of Education as a legal reference status of our school district. Legal name of school district: The Board of Education, Oakland County, DBA, Waterford School District. This district is a general powers school district by operation of law. The Board of Education is comprised of seven members who are elected for terms of six years. Members holding office on July 1st, 2024, and the expiration of their current terms are listed in the packet. Members of the Board of Education are elected in November, in the November election, even years. I so move.
Support.
Thank you. It's been moved and supported. Any comments or questions? Just as a reminder, for those who might be watching, again, this is relatively boilerplate stuff that we have to re-up every year. So, okay, all those in favor, please signify by raising your hand. Thank you so much. Motion carries 4-0. Member Jocelyn?
Superintendent's Recommendation 6-24-25: Renewal of Memberships. It is recommended that the Board of Education authorize the administration to renew Waterford School District memberships for the 2024-2025 school year in the following organizations: Metropolitan Detroit Bureau of School Studies Incorporated, Michigan Association of School Boards, Michigan Association of School Boards Legal Trust Fund, Michigan High School Athletic Association, Middle Cities Educational Management, Michigan Association of School Administrators, Waterford Area Chamber of Commerce. I so move.
Support. Thank you. Moved and supported. Any comments or questions? Really quick, a big shout-out to the Michigan Association of School Boards. They've been so valuable over these last five years, as all school boards have navigated some pretty rough waters. So really, really thankful to be a part of their organization. Okay, all those in favor, please signify by raising your hand. Thank you. The motion carries 4-0. Secretary Jocelyn?
Superintendent's Recommendation 7-24-25: Resolution: Designation of Depositories. It is recommended that the Board approve the resolution presented designating legal depositories of district money for the 2024-2025 school year. I so move.
Support.
The resolution's been moved and supported. Any comments or questions? Member Petrusia, please.
I've asked this before. We have a bunch of different banks. Why do we have a bunch of different banks? We have so much money, we just want to keep it everywhere.
Not necessarily. Many of these banks were from student activity funds for the buildings, so they would pick a local branch that was close to the school, made it a lot easier for deposits, and picking checks up and things like that. So that's where we have for student activities. And then some of them are for bond, some of them are for investment, some of our Fifth Third Bank is our main one, but some of the others do things like P cards and stuff like that, so.
Okay, thank you. Thank you. Any other comments or questions? Okay, all those in favor, please signify by raising your hand. Thank you. The motion carries 4-0. Member Jocelyn?
Superintendent's Recommendation 8-24-25: Summer Tax Collection Board Resolution. It is recommended that the Board of Education approve the summer tax collection resolution presented. I so move.
Support. Thank you. It's been moved and supported. Any comments or questions regarding the summer tax collection resolution? All those in favor, please signify by raising your hand. Thank you. The motion carries 4-0. Member Jocelyn?
Superintendent's Recommendation 9-24-25: Meal Prices 2024-2025 School Year. The administration recommends that the Board of Education establish the following school meal prices for the 2024-2025 school year as presented with no increase. I so move.
Support.
Thank you. The motion's been moved and supported. Any comments or questions regarding meal prices for 2425? Member Wagner, please.
This is just if a student were to get an additional meal, because we're, isn't, or we don't know for sure yet, do we?
No, we are going to continue universal breakfast and lunch. We've always had breakfast, but we had lunch added last year. And so if a student wants a second meal, yes, they would pay for that. And of course, adults pay for all of their meals. So yes.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Is the adult meal larger than the secondary meal for the customer, or just because they're teachers or adults?
It's usually about the same meal as what the kids do, yes.
Well, it should be the exact same. I'm just messing with you. But I'm just thinking, I'm going to go in and say I'm a student.
And I would say, good luck.
Any other comments or questions regarding meal prices? Okay, all those in favor, please signify by raising your hand. Thank you. The motion carries 4-0. Member Jocelyn, keep up the good work.
Superintendent's Recommendation 10-24-25: Title IX Policy Updates. It is recommended that the Board of Education approve the following policy updates: Policy 2264, Non-Discrimination on the Basis of Sex in Education Programs or Activities; new 2024 regulations; and Policy 2266, Non-Discrimination on the Basis of Sex in Education Programs or Activities; revised 2020 regulations. I so move.
Support.
Thank you. The motion's been moved and supported. Any comments or questions regarding our Title IX policy updates?
Member Petrusia? If these are laws we have to follow, why do we have to vote on it? Can we say no and break the law? What's, I don't understand this. This is no. We don't have a choice. This is the law. You have to do it. Why would they allow us to vote on it? I could vote no.
Please don't.
Yeah, don't, yeah.
Ooh. Well, I can screw with people tonight.
Well, thank you to the team for reviewing this.
And Megan.
Megan.
It's very tedious, so thank you so much.
All right, all those in favor, please signify by raising your hand. Thank you. The motion carries 4-0. All right, let's move on now to some administrative appointments. Member Jocelyn?
Probably the most important recommendation in this entire packet. Superintendent's Recommendation 11-24-25: Administrative Appointment. It is recommended that the Board of Education approve the following administrative contract changes and appointments for the 2024-2025 school year. Stephen Henning, Principal, Mason Middle School, 100% administrator contract, effective date July 22nd, 2024. Ann Cruz, Principal, location Durant High School, 100% administrator contract, effective date July 22nd, 2024. I so move.
Support.
The motion's been moved and supported. Any comments or questions? Member Petrusia, please.
By some people, moving buildings are going to crush families. So if I, you know, I can make some families happy here, because some are going to be crushed. I mean, it just, it's, we don't want to hold back our people, but it just, the school community in one school's losing a little bit. And I just, I feel bad when we have to do that. You need a little bit of rain for flowers to grow. It's, we move on, life goes on, and all these other wonderful things. But when you have good people and they move buildings, it just, it's heartbreaking. It's sad. I feel bad. We've got some good people, so.
Yep.
Any other comments or questions? Member Wagner?
First, I would like to congratulate Ms. Cruz.
We haven't voted on it yet.
Oh, wait, oh, oh. Oh, gosh. Oh, that's right. So we'll do it. We'll do it after. We'll vote first. We'll vote first.
How we're here tonight.
Okay, sorry. Let's vote first.
All right. All those in favor, please signify by raising your hand. Thank you. The motion carries 4-0. And we're actually going to welcome Susan File on up to introduce.
Dino.
Hi, Susan.
Hi, thank you for having me here tonight. And I'd like to first ask Ms. Cruz to come forward, just to, we just have to say a few things about Ann's leadership here in the district. She started with Waterford School District 24 years ago as a secondary teacher. She has taken a tour of duty around the district, okay? She quickly moved into administrative and leadership roles after being at Mason as a teacher. And she served eight years in various secondary administrative roles across from Mott to Mason to Pierce. And then she also spent 11 years as an elementary principal, both at Houghton and most recently at Donaldson Hills. So as a district, we are very fortunate to have such incredible passion and dedication to our students and Ann's Warrior for All Children's mantra coming to Durant. She's looking very forward to welcoming and getting to know those students at Durant that were formerly her students at Donaldson.
Yes, absolutely. It is a, it is a, you know, it's, the motions the last three days. I hear you, Mr. Petrusia, that the families and staff and my phone, just in the text messages and the phone calls and the crying, and I'm so happy for you. I'm so sad for us. But honestly, a good leader leaves people in good positions, right? You have the tools that they need to move forward. And in the interview process with Durant, I asked the teachers what they wanted, you know, what they felt about their school and what they, you know, were really looking for. And they said, this is a magical place. And I said, I would love to be part of that magic. And I'm just really to, you know, take the next step, to go back to my secondary roots and really get those kids to the finish line. I live here in the community, you know, and like Susan said, I am a warrior for kids. Like, don't get in my way, because, you know, I'm going for it 100%. So I'm just very honored to serve in this position in another area in this district, so.
Well, welcome in a new capacity.
Yes, yes.
Colleagues, member Wagner, you're number.
I just wanted to say congratulations. I'm excited. I do not doubt that you will bring your own magic to Durant, because it is such a magical building. And I can, I just foresee you doing phenomenal there, and I'm excited for you. So congratulations.
Thank you so much.
You mentioned you've been here 24 years. It seems like a long time, but I was here for a couple of years before you were hired. So it just, wow. But again, I look forward to it, because again, everything, everywhere you go, you do well. You touch, you touch lives, make everything, you know, better. So if they have issues somewhere, you're the type of person that reaches out and fixes those things. So thank you for what you do.
Yeah, you're welcome.
Yeah, and it's, Durant's going to be so lucky to have you. And speaking of a magical community, we know what you've done over at Donaldson. What a wonderful, magical place that is. And we know that our central office staff and our community is going to have to find an administrator who's worthy of that work and of that position. And so we're thankful for all that you've left over there, too.
Well, you know what? I'm going to be watching them. I'm going to be.
All right.
Of course, too. Just because I'm somewhere else doesn't mean I'm going to be like Matt, like, hey, come on, let's go.
Well, Ann, we can't wait to hear about all the wonderful things at Durant. And thank you for your service.
Yeah, you will not be disappointed.
All right. Susan?
And next, I'll ask Mr. Stephen Henning to come and have a seat at the podium, at the table, I should say. Literally metaphorical seat at the podium. So Steph, as he prefers to be called, brings to Waterford eight years of teaching experience. And his last four years have been that as an assistant principal at the Troy School District as an administrator. And we are very fortunate and lucky to be bringing Steph here. He is excited, and he is ready to take this next leap, as everyone from Troy School District tells us, that he is ready for this leap, as we've done extensive background checking on him, that making sure he's Waterford-worthy, that's what we have to do. And we are sure that he will lead the Mariners, both students and families, with both enthusiasm and a dedication to excellence.
Welcome to the podium.
Yes.
Thank you, Board. I just want to say, you're getting a high-character guy. I lead with my heart. I'm a relational leader, so I'm. with my heart. I'm a relational leader. So I'm, you know, I pride myself on knowing every kid's name by first name and correct pronunciation and knowing my staff and knowing their backgrounds and their journeys. That's just what I'm about. So I have three little ones. So when they can get up there, they'll be running through the halls like it's their building when it's not. But that's just who I am. I'm a dad-first educator, but I'm excited for this opportunity, ready to just breathe some fresh energy into Mason, into the staff, into the students in that community. And I'm just grateful for this opportunity.
Well, welcome. We've, as I hope you've inferred and deduced, we've got lots of exciting things happening in the Waterford School District. And we're so happy that you can come join Team Waterford and do what you said you were going to do. Let's, let's, let's make sure that all that magic is continuing over there at Mason because it's a, it's a great school.
Did you, did you say your kids go to school here in Waterford?
No, no. So I live in Sterling Heights. That might be the plan with my wife. She wants to always be close.
She wants you to buy a house on a lake out here.
I guess not there yet. But I have some little ones. So with the new preschool opening up, that's, that's very enticing to our family. But yeah, in time, in time.
All right. We will welcome you with open arms.
Thank you. Thank you. I appreciate that.
Member Wagner, please.
Congratulations. We're very excited to have you join our team and our family. So welcome to our district. I think you'll be very amazed at how, what an amazing community this is and the families here and our students. So, so thank you. We're excited to have you, so.
Looking forward to it.
And we always make this invitation, but we love hearing from our building principals. So don't be a stranger. No one seems to take us up on that often, very often. But don't be a stranger, okay? So welcome.
Thank you. Thank you.
Just going to get to see summer school at its finest. Great. It's already introduced and invited him into those classrooms.
Oh, no. Okay.
Be there. Yeah. All right.
Excellent.
Thank you. Yes, welcome.
I look forward to getting to know you so I can mess with you some.
All right. Again, we've got a great group here in Waterford, lots of exciting things happening. Future is bright, as we say around here. So, Member Joslin?
Superintendent's recommendation twelve dash twenty-four dash twenty-five. Science curricular materials for biology, chemistry, and physics. It is recommended that the board approve the purchase of science curricular materials and digital licenses for high school biology, chemistry, and physics from SAVVAS for six years. The total cost is $211,390 with $154,270 paid by Esser III and $57,120 to be paid by general funds. I so move.
Support.
Thank you. The motion has been moved and supported. Colleagues, comments or questions do we have?
I just, I just want to say that this is long overdue. We are almost done replacing everything in our high schools. And I, you know, thank you. I know you did a lot of work on this, Ms. Dixon. And we have needed this for so long. And I am happy to approve.
So Ms. Dixon, this does bring us up to, we've updated all of our curriculum through our core subjects.
Absolutely. Absolutely. We have been able to update all of our core subjects, math, science, social studies, and language arts. We're in a very good place right now.
Awesome. Thank you. Thank you so much.
You're welcome.
Member Patricia, please.
And again, the majority was being paid by the Esser $3 and some is coming out of the general fund. We have this all budgeted for this all going that direction?
Yes, that is correct. And the reason we have, we could not use Esser funds for the licenses. So we needed to budget that from general fund. That's correct.
We bought the microscopes or something? Is that what this is part of?
No, the microscopes were all purchased from the Esser funds.
Okay. Good deal.
And maybe just as a reminder again, for our broader audience, these Esser funds have been so instrumental in really doing some monumental work here in this district. And if any, if there's ever an argument for what equitable and increased funding can do for public schools, I hope these Esser dollars, and we have in our, we have plenty of our documents up on our website where we have to by law detail how we spent those Esser dollars. Look at them. I encourage everyone to because they have followed our strategic plan and they have allowed us to really reshape the whole student experience here in Waterford. It's always been magical stuff. So thank you, thank you, thank you.
The money that we didn't have a few years ago when we were cutting, cutting, cutting. Now we have some money and then some extra money. And again, like Julie said, we're getting back to where we should be. We're doing the thing that shouldn't be getting done, that should have been done. But without money, you can't do anything.
Absolutely.
So thank you for framing your question.
You're very welcome.
All right. All those in favor, please signify by raising your hand. All right. Excellent. Motion carries for zero. All right, colleagues, that takes us to the end of new business this evening. Thank you, everyone. We're now going to move on to public comments on non-action items this evening. I have one green card from one of our favorite visitors, Ms. Erin Asdell. Well, I'm going to welcome up here so that our listening audience at home.
Our large, our large listening audience. Actually, my wife's at my grandson's baseball game, so she has to play on this thing.
Okay, Erin Asdell, Waterford Senior Center, Waterford resident. I wanted to thank the Waterford School Board and Waterford School District for 50 years of oversight of the Waterford senior programs and for working closely with Waterford Township to facilitate a transition, which we are hoping will occur in January 2024. Again, 28 years in the Waterford School District as an employee. I'm very proud to be part of Waterford Schools and very grateful for everything that has transpired in my tenure. So thank you very much.
Thank you. We appreciate that very much. Thank you. We appreciate your work, Erin.
Again, you've worked hard at it. You've, you've made, yes, the fundraisers, the, you know, you know, when they talk about how it's, you know, well, it's self-funded, well, self-funded with a lot of work, a lot of dedications, a lot of volunteers, the fundraisers, the, again, it didn't just, you don't have Esser dollars. You don't have this money growing in, oh, look, we can just use this, we can use this. You're out there hitting the curb, getting the monies. You've done, you've done a wonderful, wonderful job at that. Again, I get goosebumps thinking about, I'm not able to participate in as much as I used to. I thought as I got older, I could, you know, do things more. I don't have my kids. I can't do as much as I did 20 years ago with three boys running around. It's like, geez, we're, this is happening, that's happening. You forget things, you try to do it. But you've always been there. And you've kept the doors open by fundraising. It isn't just money coming in. You, you have been the head of that to fundraise, to be the spirit of that, that group and to keep it going. And I truly appreciate you for that.
Thank you. Yes, always. All right. Is there anyone else who would like to speak to the board this evening? Okay, excellent. Colleagues, Board of Education reports. What reports do we have this evening? Please do.
All right. So yesterday, we had the pleasure of touring Camp WSD. I was able to tour the elementary camp with both Dr. Ristich and Member Donahue. And they were able to do the middle school so they can speak to that. But I have to say, it is such a phenomenal, phenomenal program. And our district does such a great job. Shout out to our curriculum team. I mean, we have some great teachers and our team putting that together. And it was really, really fun. And the students were so cute because we'd come into a classroom like, why are they here?
Yes.
But they were so cute. And it was really fun to see. It was also really cool to see the Promethean boards being used and seeing how they interact with that. It was just, it really is a very unique, very cool way that our district does our summer school programs. The kids were excited to be there. I mean, it was just, I don't know, if anyone gets a chance to ever do that tour, I recommend it because it really gives you a good snapshot of what's going on. And the kids are excited to be there. And it was really fun to see that they incorporated PE into it this year. And that was phenomenal to see. And it was such a great, like, social emotional learning and just, it was, all around, it was a really, really cool thing to be able to experience. And I would, I would recommend if you're ever considering if your children are in need of that or just, it's a great program. I think they said we had 380 students that had registered, but with commitments and family stuff, we ended up, there's 333 elementary students that are attending, as well as over 80 kids in childcare in the same building. So over 400 kids in that building in the summer. And they, it's just, it was very cool to witness. So highly recommend it.
Other board reports?
Patricia, please. Mentioned the Parks and Rec Village. The Parks and Rec Department's 10-year operation, Village, will be on the August 6th ballot for renewal and restoration. The Village is critical to the maintenance, operation, and future growth of Parks and Recreation Department. It represents more than half of the revenues the department receives. The Parks and Recreation Department is responsible for 16 parks and facilities and the township spanning more than 850 acres and offers more than 500 multi-generational programs every year. It's something that we need. Without it, they don't have the money to clean the buildings and stuff. So it's just something that's important. We don't use them as much. I'd like to see the schools working more with Parks and Rec through the rec programs. It used to be, when we, a few years ago, girls' basketballs, Kettering Girls were in the quarterfinals or semifinals. And every one of those girls that were on the Kettering team had come up through the Parks and Rec program. It's just good to see we, you start them young, we build them program. We have to get back to that to build our, I feel, our high school teams back to where they should be. So it's just something that's important, and we need to work with them on building that up. So if you don't vote January, or August 6th, I thought, you know, I could wait up until the August 6th meeting, but I've got people coming in, talking to me, well, who do I vote for here? What do I vote for? I forget about these mail ballots. You're filling them out now, mailing them in. What happened to just the day? Oh, the good old days. Oh, I'm getting old.
Thank you. Member Patricia?
I just, I just have something really quick. So it's that time of year, Waterford Youth Assistance is collecting shoes. I didn't bring my notes with me. So if you want to know why we collect shoes, it's a fundraiser. We've made a ton of money on it. They'll be doing Battle of the Badges this summer and Stuff the Trucks. There are boxes all over the community. Everybody, every year, we seem to be participating more and more and more. And I know, I mean, I remember being a mom, this is the time of year where you go through the closets and you're like, oh, my gosh, you have nothing that fits. So then you go buy them some clothes. And then September comes and they look like floods. So, and their shoes don't fit. So go through those closets, drop them off. You can participate in the Battle of the Badges if you want to represent the fire department or the police department or the various Stuff the Truck events. But they have it going on right now. You can check them out on Facebook or go to their website. The website gives you details on, you know, why they collect them, what they do with them once they receive them, and everything like that, so.
Member Joslin?
Yep.
Yeah, really quick to echo Member Wagner's comments about our Camp WSD. Just an amazing, magical place. I think it's important to note, too, so this is a place where our students want to go. Many of them ask to go to summer school. What a thought. And this is also a time and a place where we get to think innovatively about our approaches to teaching and learning. It's a sort of proving ground. So we have these, these communities of teachers and parents and staff members who are willing to experiment, push the envelope to make sure that these kids have really great experiences. So it is a really great thing to witness. And really quick, we also have our middle school experience, which is the same thing. So our sixth, or our fall sixth, fall seventh, fall eighth graders, are there just having a really wonderful experience. And the intentional planning and coordination, it is impressive and sets the bar high, frankly, for what we should do during our regular academic year, too. So it is just something to behold. And, you know, Member Wagner spoke a little bit about the size and scope. And we were doing some rough math afterwards with Ms. File, Ms. Dixon, and Member Donahue. And about 10%ish or eight or nine percent of our students are engaging in some sort of summer programming. Because we've got 350-ish at elementary, 100, 120 at middle school, our extra school year, our credit recovery. I mean, so there are options for our students to make sure they're on track, they're excelling, they're accelerating. And that is just a testament to our district, our administrators' commitment to making sure our students are on the right path. And two, it's important, again, we were chatting afterwards, so much of this, if not all of this, is grant funded. So this is almost like two districts, right, or two operations operating in the same district. I mean, the size and scope, just to wrap your head around that. If we have a district of about 7,000 during the academic year, and we have a district of 500, 550 during the summer. So, and that includes feeding our students, transporting our students, keeping them safe, keeping them active. It is impressive, to say the least. So thanks for the support. Lauren Wiseman, Jessica Ristich, Devin McKee, our coordinators, our amazing CIA department, and our, of course, administrative colleagues who helped coordinate that work. Colleagues, you know, too, that with Superintendent Lindberg's retirement, we've been in conversation about next steps. And those conversations will be ongoing here for the next couple of weeks as we begin to schedule, communicate with each other, our administrative colleagues, certainly a big shout out to Megan Roberts, who just seems to know everything and all the time. So stay tuned. And thank you so much for being flexible. I know it's tough to coordinate and chat. These are long conversations and it's tough. We have jobs. And so thank you for being flexible and having those conversations. I look forward to next steps, so. All right. Colleagues, no further business. Nice meeting is adjourned. Thank you so much.